All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. This time I'll call this May 19, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please silence your cell phones. And Amber, will you do roll call?
Here.
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 Okay, before we get started, I just want to go over a couple of things, just to talk about the procedure here tonight. The commission's going to be presented with some agenda items, and the Planning Department representative will get up and present those items. The representative for each of them has an opportunity to speak after the representative from the Planning Department talks. And our goal is just to have a fair hearing and everybody, you know, to have everybody heard. We invite you to come up and ask questions or speak your mind during the proceedings, during the public hearings. And please keep your time, your talk to a five-minute time limit. Once everybody's spoken, we'll close the public hearing, and a representative will have an opportunity to address any questions that may have come up. And then we will open the floor to the commission for questions, comments, and a vote. Besides the basic procedure, I want to also mention the procedures revolving around the subdivision plats. By Alabama state statute, the Planning Commission is the final approval authority for all the subdivision plats. So with regards to the subdivision plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have previously adopted. So we do require a public hearing on each of the plat, and we welcome any and all comments. But please understand that this commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements of the law and the laws and regulations that we previously just described. Okay. So what the first order of business will be citizens' communication. And at this particular time, if you would like to speak on anything that is not on the regular agenda, or could be on the consent agenda, and there's two items in that case, if you would like to speak about any of those, either of those subjects, please come forward now. Seeing no one, we'll move on. The first bit of the process that I would like to take care of is we have a number of items that have been requested to be postponed by the representative of each of them. So I'm going to mention the five of them that have been represented for postponement, and then we're going to have a motion and a vote on that. No public hearing is required. So item number one, which was on the consented agenda, PL 2019-00159, the Talmage Annexation has been requested for postponement. Item number three, PL 2019-00160, Talmage rezoning from rural to development district housing has been requested to be postponed. Item number four, 2019-00161, the Talmage Subdivision Preliminary Plat has also been requested to postpone. These are all to a date certain of 11 July, by the way. Item number four, 2019-00217, the Clifton rezoning from rural with conservation overlay to limited development district with conservation overlay. And finally, item number six, which is 2019-00220, which is 2449 Moores Mill Road, recommendation to the City Council for a conditional use approval for a performance residential development. Do I hear a motion to postpone?
I move we postpone as per request of the applicants.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, which requires no public hearing. The consent agenda has two different items. Packet meeting minutes of April 8, regular meeting minutes from April 11, 2019, plus one other item, which is PL 2019-0222, Tuscany Hills 6A Revised Final Plat. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do, this leaves us with one item on the consent agenda, is the chair of the commission. This is Tuscany Hills Phase 6A Revised Final Plat. It is a 37-lot subdivision. This particular phase is located right in the middle of the current developed portion of the Tuscany Hills subdivision. You can see the property is owned DDH. It is not under a planned development district designation. It's a revised final plat. This is the previous final that was approved. The applicant was initially seeking conventional subdivision approval. They are now requesting to go our other route for subdivision approval, which is performance, which typically results in smaller lots. That's not the case here, but it does provide for some more flexible setbacks with the provision of common open spaces, somewhat mitigation for what typically would be smaller lots in a performance format. You've got the staff report in your packet, the comments I would describe as being minor in nature, and we've recommended approval, and be happy to answer any questions for you.
This does not require a public hearing, a motion, or discussion?
We accept or approve.
Motion is second. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Okay, on to new business. Item number seven, which is 2019-00221, Kulis Young Subdivision, re-division of Lot 1, Preliminary Plat. Mr. Kip?
Good evening, commissioners. This is a request for preliminary plat approval. The applicant is seeking to subdivide the property into 22 townhouse lots with one open space lot and one lot for future development. The property owner is Cool Properties, Inc., and they're represented by Daniel Holland Homes. The zoning of the property is CDD, which allows townhome subdivisions and townhomes by right. The airport, as you can see on the proxy map, is to the south, zone industrial. The remaining property to the north is all consistent with CDD. There's some just minor notes that the applicant will be, have to address in order to move forward with the final plat, or recording of the plat. Staff's recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did get two comments, one from Mark Sterling at the university, not in support or opposition, but just wanted to get more information and make sure it's known that there is an airport and have airport activities occurring on Airport Road. And the other comment from Robert G. Young, who wanted to make it stated on the public record that this project is in no way related to Young Plant Farm or the Young family, just the name, in name only. And I don't know if there's anyone representing, oh, happy to answer any questions.
Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering Solutions here on behalf of Chris Kulis and Daniel Holland. I don't know if there's anybody here to talk, but I'll talk after public hearing or as part of it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. This does require a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to come forward and speak on this item, please do so now. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, discussion?
Quick question with staff. This, I noticed you point out in your, in your staff report that the land use classification for this property is light industrial, industrial support. And you, but you still recommend approval, which is often not the case when it doesn't meet our land use classification.
I think the intention of the applicant is to develop this lot 23, yeah, as either commercial or office or some combination of both, and potentially with residential also. While this isn't an industrial use, there are other residential properties in the, in the area. There's one immediately, well, two, two properties down to the east, and there's some other townhomes to the north of this area, that zone, or that has a future land use of industrial. Unfortunately, they're not on the map, but there's some here, and there's some actually there's, to the, off the screen to the north, there's some other single-family residences. Parker may want to speak a little bit more about the future development.
We can come back to that. Yeah, so let's talk about a couple of things. One, I know we've got some airport comments and some concerns. I also talked to Mark Sterling with the university. I met with Bill Hutto yesterday to show him the project. I always do that with Bill when we have something that's airport-related. So I guess paraphrasing their thoughts, they're not really against the project in any way. They're concerned with neighbors complaining about the airport noise. But the reality of it is, you know, Mark told me there's $40 million worth of research money, and, and the schools there, and they're, they've got flight operations all day, every day, basically. And so, you know, the airport's not going anywhere, and they're, they're not going to change their hours of operations because some citizens call council people. So, and so that was their, that was their sort of position, and we get that. We completely understand that, and we support that. So the intent of this, I've looked at this property over the last few years several times with Mr. Kulis, and have talked to Forrest several times about that sort of light industrial question. I can't really speak to the comp plan in terms of, I guess that came about because of what's there now in terms of Young's Plant Farm. I don't know that, you know, the Makata development, or the sort of commercial space here and the sort of city park space and the, everything else around here.
If I could just briefly, just add, Commissioner McCord's absolutely correct. It is on rare occasion that the staff recommends that you deviate from the future land use plan. However, in certain cases where, when you go back to the original comp plan process, it's like I always say, you, when you do that, take that first crack at it, there's a little bit of a broad brush to it. And then we go in and we've done, as you know, and we, we are constantly doing focus area studies where we, where we really zoom in. What I think happened here is when we were kind of back in that bigger picture, broad brush approach, I think what happened was, we ended up just kind of drawing a line right down, just like that. And when you, if you're familiar with this property, you look at the nuances of it, you know, when we focused in on it and looked at it, you've got the, essentially the, the Kulis estate is what I would refer to it as back in here. It's all nicely wooded, and you do have the actual plant farm activities back here, but then you've got the really nice park, a real nice commercial center here. And it, it made sense to us as a staff that this, this type of development, the airport issue aside, and also acknowledged that this would actually be a better fit at this location, in our opinion.
Thank you for adding that. Yeah, actually, Young, the Young sort of office, not Kulis, but, but Young. I'm going to go back to here just to answer a couple of questions because it is plat-related. This piece here, this, this future development piece, one of the plat comments was that the plat doesn't meet the required open space. What's coming next month to you is originally this part here was going to be a one-story office retail building. Mr. Kulis has decided that a two or three, I guess a three-story building with a couple of townhouse units on top is a little bit more what he would like to see there. It's a little bit better, it's actually, it's a lot better looking building. But, so, because it's a mixed use, it becomes not a townhouse. It's townhouse units above the retail and commerce and office, but it's not, it's, it's multifamily. It's, it's not townhouse lots. So it comes back to you as multifamily is conditional in this zone. So when this, what you'll see next month on this lot, that lot will have the remaining open space that is necessary to meet the open space for the overall development. That lot will stand alone on its own. So, sorry, that's not before you tonight, but just the timing of it, we, originally we didn't think it was, it would be a permitted right because it was commercial, but the residential is what triggers conditional use. So, so here are the 22 lots in the subdivision. That lot will come back to you as a conditional use next month. In talking with Bill Hutto yesterday, again, their number one concern is complaints from, from residents. The intent of this subdivision is not one to shy away from the airport. It's actually intended to be, I mean, there are people that are going to want to be here at this location.
What's your plan, the land is like off?
Yeah, I mean, the reality of it is, in talking with Bill, they've got this program now, when you come out of this four-year program, you've got about 250 hours of flight time. To get to a pilot level for Delta or Southwest, you need 1,000 hours. So what they've got is they've got people finishing this degree, staying in town, finishing their 750 hours, and, and moving through the pilot program. So we feel like this is a good location for, for some folks to live, especially in a townhome, whether it's commercial, whether it's rental property, some of it may be game day for folks to fly in. So, so it's, it's townhouse. What'll be before you next month will be the conditional piece. That will also be townhouse on top of the retail. And so be happy to answer any questions or hear, hear your thoughts.
So this is a, do we have, this is a performance development. And we're looking at the, if we're looking at just the townhouses, is that where the comment came from, that we didn't have enough open space associated with just the townhouses? You have to look at this thing in its entirety to get that open space.
Yeah, I can answer. Open space is required for residential uses. So if this entire lot was, it's four acres. If one acre is commercial, then the, the open space is required for three acres.
Okay.
You follow? So, so however, because we've, we're putting a residential.
Put some residential on top.
Exactly. Now we're back to.
It's got to be performance for four acres.
Exactly. And, and that open space is there. The whole thing was plotted. We were, and I'm sorry, I don't have that layout, but anyway, we'll, we'll address.
So what I'm getting at is, it seems like we're, this is not meeting the performance requirements, if we're just looking at just the.
I think you see, you'll see a comment related to open space, and because it's a preliminary plat, what, what we typically do is we'll make those comments and put the applicant on notice. They've still got to meet all the requirements. It's a preliminary plat. Our expectation is that there will be no comments when they come back in with their final plat. So that's our, that's our check and balance system.
That makes sense.
So we'll, the applicant's aware of it, we're very much aware of it, we'll make sure it's compliant.
Sounds good. Okay, thanks.
In, in response to the concerns about noise, is the developer taking any steps to address that at all?
Yes, we, I've talked with the builder, talked to Kulis. With today's energy standards, windows and doors and things are already sort of elevated from what they used to be. But he's already talking about using a, more of a sound berry, barrier, you know, bat-type insulation and not just energy. So he's already starting to look into those options, but, but he is definitely planning on, he is sensitive to the fact that this has got to be somewhere that someone wants to live. And so he, he's, you know, I mean, there are FAA regulate, or recommendations. He hasn't gotten knee-deep in those yet to see what those are, but the good thing is, it's, I'm, I just, just so we can, I guess we can talk through a little bit on the future. Oops, sorry, sorry. And the, the airport has a master plan. If you look at that, that road called Taxi Lane right there, and you see this huge concrete, that's where all the planes sort of start out, and there's hangars over there. So the, the airport's master plan is a series of, of buildings and offices right there that will be a combination of offices and, and hangars. So you may have like a corporate, a corporate entity may have their own hangar for their plane or two planes. And so ultimately, there'll be some buildings there for buffering, and then our three-story building will be buffering. We are, we are, you know, from, from our site, it's about 2,000 feet to the runway. We're about the middle of the north-south runway, so we're actually not in the, the runway protection zone. I mean, everything around here, obviously, there is noise associated with an airport, but yeah, you can see that, you can see where the site is. I'm not, we may have, we may have less noise than White Oaks, for example, because of the flight pattern. So we'll, we will address to some degree, but.
Aerial shows very few aircraft there, but I think the program has grown to the extent now they've got 35, 40 aircraft that.
Right.
That are active as soon as, soon as daybreak to, to after dark at night. And I think if the program continues, it's going to get to be more active. And I'd just like to say, and I appreciate the developer looking into these noise abatement, but I'd feel more comfortable if it was something more definitive because they're not hard to do, and they're, like you've said, they, they also complement the environmental energy efficiency of homes. And I just was looking for something a little bit more definitive.
Right, and I talked to Daniel today to explain the process that, that tonight's a plat, next month, we're, we'll be back before this body asking for a conditional use where conditions may be applied. And so I don't know how that works, but I, I told him, I said, you need to do a little research in the next month so that we can answer those noise abatement questions with a little bit more meat on the bones than, than what we currently have, so.
Represent your clients well and do a professional job with what you do, and I'm confident that'll be done properly.
Thank you.
I'm good with this, but I want to ask a question to satisfy my curiosity. Lots one through six are shorter than the seven through 11. Is that going to be added to the open space? Is that what you, because you've got your 15-foot buffer yard.
Yeah, it's the, it's all the same product. I mean, there's, there's, there's two six-unit buildings and two five-unit buildings. One of the comments was you can't have more than 10. That's, there's 11 lots in a row, but it's a six and a five. And, and you see the big bulb of the cul-de-sac is what's driving the ultimate sort of depth. And so we, yeah, we did need that area for open space. That's why, that's why they sort of, they're smaller there. But, but the intent, I mean, we'll have some, there's a big slope over there going to the, to the park, but we're going to try to access the park. We got to talk to Becky about a few things. But, but for all intents and purposes, they'll, their, their backyard will go all the way to, to the property. These lines are on paper, but out in the field, that'll just seem like they have the same 40-foot backyard that everybody else has.
Good. All right. Well, this requires a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing now. Does anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Being no one, close the public hearing. Look for any more comments or motion on this item.
I move we approve PL 2019-00221 with staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have one nay. Motion carries. Let's move along to agenda item number eight, which is 2019-0225 West Tech Park Annex Subdivision, the preliminary plat. Ms. Robeson?
That's correct. These next two cases are both regarding the West Tech Park Annex. The property is owned by the City of Auburn Industrial Development Board. It's zoned industrial south of the existing West Tech Park. The recommend, I mean, the proposal is seven lots, and a couple of those are fully contained by stream buffers or streams or even wetlands. So that leaves, I think, five buildable lots. They are going to extend, well, West Tech Park has, West Tech Lane has been extended. All of the infrastructure is already in. We do recommend approval. And I did not receive any correspondence on this one. And the only comments, recommendation of approval with staff comments, and those are only notational.
This requires a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this. Anybody like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Look for discussion, comments, motion from the commission.
I move to approve PL case 2019-00225 West Tech Park Annex Preliminary Plat. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item is agenda item number nine, which is PL 2019-00226, and it's the final plat of the West Tech Park Annex Subdivision.
Need to approve.
Requires no public hearing. Have a motion to approve?
Same comments apply.
You have a second?
Yes, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item is agenda item number 10, PL 2019-00224 East Glen Storage at Bent Creek.
Good evening.
Mr. Caldwell?
The case before you is a conditional use approval for a, a property along East Glen Avenue, just west of Bent Creek Road. This is a, an oddly shaped property. It's long and slender to the north. It's a seven and a half acres approximately in size, and the proposed conditional use is a climate-controlled and mini warehouse storage. Turn your head to the right, be looking north. So it's, north is to your right, and you can see East Glen traversing to the south, to the left. And what's represented is a three-story building on the right and a one-story building on the left. The applicant, I believe, is going to share with you some of their proposals about elevations. This is what was included in your packet. But if we could get back to the property, it is a CDD-zoned property. It too is bordered by the airport to the west. We were just looking at the other side of the airport with the townhomes. There's undeveloped property to the north, undeveloped property to the east, along with some traditional gateway commercial developments. The property's future land use is gateway commercial, and that's, just for your knowledge, is defined as a broad mix of uses, along existing corridors with an emphasis on access management, corridor overlay requirements, and quality aesthetics. That's how that's defined in the comp plan. And we're using that basis as our recommendation for denial for this use, based on its compatibility with the gateway commercial land use class. I know the applicant and his surveyor and engineer are here. Staff does have some comments, make the applicant aware of the special development standards and the corridor requirements that would be required. Engineering has some stormwater analysis, sidewalk, and then transportation comments that you can see in your packet. Fairly standard. We'll look real quick at the airport runway protection zone, airport ordinance map, and here you can see where it's highlighted on the, on the east side of the north-south And then here on the aerial. Of course, it would conform with our airport ordinance as far as height is concerned. This is a depressed piece of property in that it's well below the elevation of the runway, and they should have sufficient room to go up in height and not be deemed an airport obstruction. That would be, that'd be studied, of course, during the DRT. That's available for any. We did take two comments, one from Mark Sterling, the representative of the university. He wanted to ensure that the roof would not be reflective and that they would recognize the height, which we'll definitely, definitely study. And then an adjoining property owner who was not supportive of this and said they may or may not attend this evening.
Thank you.
If they have.
Did they say why they were not, did they?
They, their comments were in line with staff's about being a gateway and appropriateness of the use as the central entrance to Auburn.
Representative, want to?
Let me ask, let me ask you a question. You mainly comment about the height, but also in some of the literature, it talks about the requirements for trees and the landscaping. Those trees got to meet that same height requirement, and it'd be better off just to turn that into shrubbery as opposed to trees at that location, because they just spent some money even cutting down trees across, across the roadway.
That's right.
Because they approached them.
That's right. Yeah, and, and I think one, one part of, a part of our development review would be landscaping, and we would likely, well, not likely, we would require canopy trees along at least the Glen frontage, if not elsewhere on the site.
Just keep them, the height down. Well, it's, that hill is probably 30 or 40 feet, isn't it?
I'm sure Ledge knows the topo better, but that, that's.
Just raised a question.
Fair enough.
We'll probably go with dwarf elms.
All right. Would you like to come up? Would you like to come up?
Ledge Nettles baseline surveying. If you'd rather do a public hearing first and then we can discuss, I'd be glad to, or if you want me to just cover it and we go through further comments?
Let's go ahead and have a look. Why don't you go ahead and do that, and then we'll have a public hearing, see if anybody else has any interest.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
No, I mean, have your presentation first.
Okay, all right. All right, well, here's what we've got. We've got a few different things. We've, since the packet meeting, we've got a couple of renderings. I'm gonna let Perry, the representative, talk about that. Speaking on the land use, it's kind of like we talked about while ago, the previous project. Now, you kind of review it on a project basis sometimes, and I was noticing that. But this is a very unique piece of property. And one thing I want to point out that is very worth noting is the traffic, traffic that it would generate versus what, what would be proposed in the land use category would generate, like more commercial, more traffic in that intersection with a lot of fast traffic coming down through there. I actually think that would be worse than the low-impact volume in this case. So I think that's a plus for this type of use. And not to mention that the topography is horrific with, with what's buildable right there. If you look at the area, you can see kind of the little green line. That's basically the bottom of the slope. And so you can see how very little room you have to develop right there with what's left. So you kind of got to have a site that'll fit it almost to make it even worth it. And I don't even know if it's been very much sought after for a while. So the site's buffered pretty well around it. You know by, you can't go any further around to the south, really around the corner, there's no land available, you know? And then there's the road that's about 40 feet or 50 feet above the ground level right there. So that's, that's kind of a buffer right there that you, you won't even be able to see it very well from any of the adjacent properties. There's a lot of topography that comes down even from this site. Not only do you come down to this pad site, but from there, it goes down before you get back to Glen Avenue too. So we've got a lot of stuff that, I want to, I want to let Perry show you what he's got on the facade, because I know that was a point of contention coming into the gateway. I want him to show you what he's had his architect generate to see if that might match a little bit better, what, what you might want to see. And that's what we've had a little chance to do, so I'm gonna let Perry talk about that.
Thank you for your time, and thanks for listening. Note that the, first of all, I just want to mention that the footprint of really everything you're seeing is going to come in. That top building is a bigger footprint than I need. The bottom building is going to be split into two buildings, and although I didn't have time to squeeze it into the landscape plan or the, or the elevations that you're looking at, there were some kind of trees that Ledge recommended placing in between those two buildings. The goal is to break up the sort of monolithic blob that, that you guys are trying to avoid. And these, I was encouraged to emphasize the, the buildings to the south because honestly, the majority of the three-story building will probably be at least partially shrouded by the existing vegetation. What you see now on the single-story portion is parapet bump, bump-ups added at building corners to sort of break up the roof line, brick column bump-outs added to break up that monolithic feel, and profiled ephesus cornice added at the roof line to provide additional dimension. This is a lot more detail than I provided earlier, and I apologize for not going into that level of detail earlier. Additionally, wanted to mention, I don't know if y'all have had a chance to see, the three-story portion has more architectural features and glass on the southernmost or left-hand portion of the building. Again, the, most of what you see on the right side of that building will be behind a whole bunch of trees anyway. I don't know if you guys want to hear my whole spiel on demand. I'll just kind of hit some of the high points. There's a facility in Pine Grove near Opelika that's 17 miles away. They get inquiries from desperate students during peak leasing season. Obviously, there's a lot of job growth, there's a lot of housing growth southeast of the core of Auburn. And there is really not, there is no storage south of Opelika Road or south of 85. Residents of the neighborhoods like White Oaks and places like that have to drive all the way up there to Pepperell Parkway or places like that.
Just right up the road?
On where?
Right up Frederick Road. There'd be just, there's one very close.
Okay.
Just on the other side of Tiger Town.
Oh, okay, okay, in Opelika. Right, right. A 2015 study prepared by Thomas and Hutton concluded that based on the square footage that I'm proposing here, you're looking at an average of 3.9 trips per hour. Your morning peak hours tend to be lower traffic than your PM hours. We're talking about minimal noise and light pollution, very limited impact on infrastructure as far as schools and roads and utilities, services, et cetera. This is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. It's going to be as nice or nicer than any facility in town, including Store Eagle, with all of the, all of the best and, and safest features. Obviously, the parcel's been sitting here for, I think, a decade with zero interest from everybody who's looked at it. And a multimillion-dollar project there will provide more tax revenue. And this product type is shown to hold its value indefinitely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions?
Go ahead.
What, what are the big rectangles made out of?
They're ephesus, I thought, Arthur.
I'm sorry?
I think they're ephesus.
Correct.
I don't know what that is, I'm sorry.
Drive it, drive it.
Drive it, thank you, I know what drive it is.
Now, you're going to, this is, is all of it going to be climate-controlled?
The, as the building gets skinnier on the southern wedge of the property, the only possible use there would be drive-up units, but majority climate-controlled.
Where, my question related really is, where are your, where are your, your?
Heating, cooling, HVAC?
Stuff's going to be.
Well, we haven't gotten into that, that level of detail yet. I was assuming that that would kind of be approached in the, in the DRT process, but I'm, I'm kind of new to all this, so we can, we can definitely.
Thinking of the aesthetics a little bit here is the reason I raise that point. It certainly need to be on the inside as opposed to the Glen side.
Yeah, I mean, East Glen is a corridor, so we've got corridor overlay regulations in place that, that require screening of all those kinds of things. You know, I, I don't know what the, what the board's pleasure is here, there, here. However, as, as planning director, what I would offer is if you are inclined to act favorably on this use, I would ask that you consider tabling it. We would really like to have postponing it. We would really like to have the opportunity to work with the applicant on the, the building materials and how this looks. I can't tell you how much the, the comment that Tyler shared with you with the property owner to the north, I know this is a challenged piece of property, it is a highly visible piece of property. And whatever's developed on it, that's great, but sometimes nothing is better than something. And if we're going to have something, I want something to look pretty good. And I think, I think this property cries out for that.
But I also agree that they have put in a very valiant effort to fit something on this piece of property.
No doubt, no doubt.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I'm sorry, with, with the use at all. It's the aesthetics of it. I mean, this is, you know, I don't have to repeat it, but this is one of the major gateways coming into our city, and it needs to look good. And there's got to be a fence, and I don't know what you were thinking the fence would be made out of, but I would like more work on, on how this looks.
Wait, let me dispense with the public hearing here first, see if there's anybody who'd like to speak. So I'm going to open the public hearing on this because it requires one. Is anybody there here would like to speak about this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we can continue our discussion or?
I move to postpone this item 10 on the agenda to our next regular meeting.
That would be June 13th, if you're so inclined.
I'll second that, based on Forrest's idea that they work with staff relative to aesthetics.
Before we have a vote, any discussion on the motion? I would ask one thing, are you amenable to, to this yourself, or would you?
Absolutely. This was, the, the past 48 hours was a scramble as far as the, the elevations, and it was, it was tough for me to get specific feedback on what exactly I can do, but, but there's a lot of.
This will allow Forrest to work that out.
Absolutely. No question. It'll just give us an opportunity to have some, some dialogue and share some thoughts and ideas.
Forrest, I don't know if it's, it's legal or possible, but this, I mean, Design Review Committee would probably be happy to look at this.
That was the comment I was going to make.
If it's, if it's legal to do that, you know, that committee's related, I think, just to the CBD, but.
Yeah, the found, well, I'll have to look at the, at the, the legislation that established them. As you know, it's officially limited to the urban core and college edge overlay district.
That's what I was going to ask the question.
But I don't disagree with you that there would be other, there would be other locations where it certainly would not be.
It's an advisory body, though, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it's only advisory, it's not, it's not.
That's correct. It is, yeah, it's not a, it's not a binding kind of thing, but it is nice to have that opportunity to avail ourselves of, of some expertise in that realm.
Is that something we can, you can look into?
I think we'll certainly, we'll, we'll talk about it with the applicant and see what we can do. I think we all want what's best for this parcel.
Okay.
And so I think we can, we can deal with that appropriately.
Vote for postponement, does it need to be to date certain and/or any other reasoning?
Um, no, I think the, the, the planning commission reserves the right to postpone any matter at its pleasure.
I think that because of its unique dimensions of this property and the location of this property causes us to not, I think, showing some interest in the use. Like that's, it's the condition.
Right, that's right.
On which we want that use to be built. Make it compatible with that environment.
Yeah, so.
Trying to intentionally stall it. I think we're trying to make.
So we have a motion on the table to postpone this item until the next meeting. We'll make that a date certain.
June 13th.
June 13th. Say again?
Say.
We have a set motion and a second. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries, postponed to the next meeting.
I do want to express appreciation since our, he did take our, listen carefully at our Monday packet meeting, and immediately tried to work on adjusting to some of those things he thought was important to us. And I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
He just couldn't have enough time.
Okay, so let's move on to other business, and I have a little communication that I'd like to send here before we wrap up tonight on behalf of the planning commission and the planning staff and the citizens of Auburn whom we all serve. I'd like to recognize and thank Dan Bennett, the current mayor's planning commission representative since 2016 on this, his last planning commission meeting. Your experience, your logical arguments, and your generous, all-around good nature is going to be greatly missed. So fortunately, Dan's going to be, continue to serve on the downtown design review committee, so he's still going to be able to serve Auburn in a very important capacity, and thank you for your service.
My pleasure, thank you. I must say, I was reluctant to take the position and have thoroughly enjoyed it.
Good.
And enjoyed working with each of you, so.
Yeah, the staff echoes every bit of that sentiment. We're very appreciative.
Very much. Mr. Cotton, have anything to close it up with?
No, sir.
Any city staff, any comments? Okay, thank you for your time. Meeting is adjourned.